Good morning, everyone. Welcome to this August 28, 2025, meeting of the Lewis and Clark County Board of County Commissioners. As always, we start out with a pledge of allegiance and continue from there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's all I can do to not burst into "for beautiful," you know, never mind. Oh, let's see, and today is Thursday, and I'm supposed to introduce everybody. I'm Candace Payne. I am the Chair of this commission. To my immediate left is Commissioner Tom Rolfe.
Good morning, Chair Payne.
Good morning, Thomas. And to his left is Brandy Spangler, who is our Recording Secretary, who kind of cracks the whip around here. And to her left is Jenny Chambers, who is the Director of the Planning and Community Development Department, as well as Head of Public Works. To my immediate right is Commissioner Andy Hunt-Housen. Good morning, Mr. Hunt-Housen. To his immediate right is Nico Hash from our county attorney's office, and Roger Balls, our C A O, Chief Administrative Officer. We have a sign-in sheet in the front and an agenda if you want to see what to expect in our future endeavors here. Okay, and did I get everything? Yes, I did. Okay, we start off with the consent action items as presented by Roger Balls. Go for it.
Thank you, Chair Payne. This is item 2A on the consent action items that we have. It's vendor claims report for week ending August 29, 2025. Staff recommends approval, Commissioners. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Roger. Is there any questions from the commission? We have previously reviewed this report, each one of us. Okay, is there any public comment? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Chair Payne, I would move to approve Consent Action Item 2A, as explained by Roger Balls.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the Consent Action Item as described by Roger Balls. Is there any further comment from the commission?
Chair Payne, I'd just like to take a moment of personal privilege and thank Marnie Bentley for, whenever I have a question about things, she gets right back to me so I know what, as I'm going through those bills, and I really appreciate your efforts and how thorough you are.
Nicely done, Tom. Thank you. Okay, that being said, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the Consent Action Item 2A, as presented by Roger Balls. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Moving right along to Action Item 3A. This is a resolution to transfer property between certain governmental entities will be presented by Mr. Dustin Noell, and it is Resolution 2025-100. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair Payne and Commissioners. This morning, I have before me a Resolution 2025-100 to transfer property between certain governmental entities. Montana Code Annotated 7-8-101 authorizes the sale or trade of property to any city, town, or political subdivision, as the interests of its inhabitants require that is not necessary for the conduct of the county business. On August 12, 2025, Resolution 2025-72 intend to transfer property between certain governmental entities was passed to notify the public of the county's intent to surplus and transfer by sale to Jefferson County the following equipment: one international snowplow, three Henke V plow attachments, four Henderson sander boxes, two Williamson dump boxes, and two walk-and-roll compactor/packers for the market value total of all the equipment of $31,200. Legal ads appeared in the Helena Independent Record on Saturdays, August 16 and August 23, notifying the public of the commission's intent, and written public comment was accepted until 4:00 p.m. yesterday at the Lewis and Clark County Clerk and Recorder's Office. And at this time, I did not have any public comment, don't there, that I checked? Today's the date and time set for the public hearing. Staff recommends the Board of County Commissioners approve Resolution 2025-100 to surplus and sell one international snowplow, three Henke V plows, four Henderson sander boxes, two Williamson dump boxes, two walk-and-roll packers, two Jefferson County for the market value total of $31,200.
Thank you, Dustin.
Can I ask you any questions that you may have? Thank you.
I'm going to ask you just, and I'm pretty sure this answer has already been provided on other items that we've sold. So what becomes of the $31,200 that we get for selling this equipment?
Thanks for the question, Chair Payne. To my knowledge, it does make its way back into our C I P, Capital Improvement Plan, for future equipment purchases.
Okay, I think that's an important point to make, that this money doesn't just disappear into la-la land. It goes back and replaces, so that we have a dependable, up-to-date, that our equipment is top drawer, and you can depend on it when it shows up. Is there any comments from the commission, questions?
No.
I do not, Chair Payne.
Is there any public comment? Nope. Okay. In that case, I would entertain a motion.
Chair Payne, I'd move that we approve Resolution 2025-100 to transfer property between certain government entities as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the Action Item 3A, Resolution 2025-100. Is there any further comment from the Commissioners? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving Action Item 3A, Resolution 2025-100, to transfer property between certain governmental entities as presented by Mr. Dustin Noell, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Chair Payne and Commissioners. I just wanted to make you aware that in the audience is Bear Taylor, Jefferson County Road Supervisor.
Oh, I think he should come forward.
And if, wanted to give him the opportunity to talk, if he'd like to.
Yeah. Good morning. Would you state your name?
Good morning, Commissioners. I am Bear Taylor, Jefferson County Road and Bridge Supervisor. I wanted to take a quick moment just to thank you all for your consideration in this resolution. I really wanted to thank Dustin and his efforts and follow-through on making this happen. As you all know, resources are dwindling.
Yes.
Are dwindling very much in the public works world, and this is really going to help us move forward with our needs in our county. So we really appreciate the continuing efforts and joint efforts between us and Lewis and Clark County.
Thank you. I have a question for you. When you get this kind of equipment from Lewis and Clark County, which has probably been inspected by my friend Dustin over there, is it in good enough shape you can use it immediately, or do you have to go back in and fix stuff?
To my knowledge, there's only two items on there that will require a little bit of repair, two of those sander boxes, and we knew that going into this. The rest of it's going to be put into service near immediately. It's going to allow us to provide a much higher level of service to our residents, and so I just greatly appreciate it.
Well, thank you. That's good to hear, and I'm not surprised. I've heard this before. Thank you for coming in today.
No, thank you for your time.
Okay. Moved and seconded. We approved, right? Okay. Dustin, did you have something else?
I did. I forgot to state who I was in, for the record. I'm Dustin Noell, shop manager for Lewis and Clark County Public Works.
Oops.
I apologize for that.
You know.
Thank you.
We just assume everybody knows everybody. We're all neighbors here. Thank you, Dustin. Okay. Item 3B on today's action items is an affiliation agreement between Lewis and Clark County Department of Criminal Justice Services and Carroll College will be presented by Ms. Kelly McBride. Morning, Kelly.
Good morning, Chair Payne and Commissioners. For the record, my name is Kelly McBride. I'm the Director of your Department of Criminal Justice Services. And as you said before you, is an affiliation agreement between Carroll College and the Department of Criminal Justice Services, Lewis and Clark County. So that you know, therapist Brittany Herzog is here with us, with me today, with you today. So if you have any questions regarding this affiliation agreement, she might be best suited to answer those questions, but I'll do my best. So Lewis and Clark County Department of Criminal Justice Services and Carroll College Department of Social Work, C C S W, will enter with your approval into an agreement for Criminal Justice Services to host a student intern in the county detention center for the fall 2025 to spring 2026 semester. Integrating a social work student intern into the county detention center provides strategic benefits to the behavioral health team, incarcerated individuals, and the facility. Interns bring fresh perspectives, current academic knowledge, and an eagerness to learn, which enhances the team's capacity to provide timely and person-centered services. Their academic training equips them with up-to-date practices that can complement current service models, while their presence allows the team to broaden outreach, increase service interventions, and strengthen case management and reentry planning. In addition, hosting interns demonstrates to the community that Lewis and Clark County is committed to advancing the training and professional development of the behavioral health workforce, building a sustainable pipeline for future recruitment. This investment not only improves rehabilitative outcomes for incarcerated individuals, but also reinforces the county's leadership in innovative and person-centered service delivery. The staff recommends approval of this agreement.
Thank you, Kelly. Commissioner, do you have any questions? Okay. I have a question. So how much is this agreement going to cost the taxpayers? Are we putting money into this?
That's a great question, Chair Payne.
It's very important to our taxpayers.
Yes. There is not money being put into this. This is an agreement. It will take some of our staff time, for sure. Brittany will be providing the supervision for the intern. The benefit that we get out of that, though, is much, much bigger, and so no, there's no money involved.
One hand washes the other, so to speak. Okay. Is there any further comment from the commission? Is there any public comment? Seeing no public comment, I would entertain a motion.
Chair Payne, I move to approve the affiliation agreement between Lewis and Clark County Department of Criminal Justice Services and Carroll College, as explained by Kelly McBride.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve this affiliation agreement as described by Kelly McBride. Does the commission have any further comment? Andy?
Chair Payne?
Yeah.
Just wanted to thank you for bringing this forward. Appreciate the, I guess, thinking outside the box, in a sense, and going the extra mile. We don't have to do this, and Carroll doesn't, they're always probably looking for sites for their students to learn and grow as part of their experience, but I'm glad that we're doing this. It's not only going to help us, but it helps the student. It partners with our community and other entities in our community, and I'm hopeful that it'll even help those that are residents of our detention center for this period of time. So thank you for bringing this forward, and full support.
Thank you, Andy. Anything else, Tom?
Just that I agree with Commissioner Hunt-Housen on this, and I think it's a great action.
Okay. Oh, she left. No, it's okay. I think I am. Yeah, I mean, it's been moved and seconded, then we had the discussion. Okay. It has been moved and seconded that we approve Action 3B, affiliation agreement between Lewis and Clark County Department of Criminal Justice Services and Carroll College. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Next on our agenda, Action Item 3A, Resolution 2025-96, to levy and assess the Juniper Stable Rural Improvement District Number 2023-3, to be presented by our friend Jessica Makas. Good morning, Jessica.
Good morning, Chair Payne and Commissioners. My name is Jessica Makas, Special District's Coordinator for Lewis and Clark County. Today, you'll be holding a public hearing to hear comments and objections regarding the final adoption of a resolution to levy and assess an annual special assessment upon each benefiting property within the Juniper Stable Rural Improvement District. There are a total of 33 benefiting properties within this district. This district is on the map before you. It does not have a color on it, but it's just outlined in blue. You can see the boundary here, just off the frontage road. The Juniper Stable R I D was created in 2023 to improve and maintain Juniper Drive and Stable Road. Improvements for the district included the installation of a three-inch asphalt overlay and chip and fog sealing over the full extent of Juniper Drive and Stable Road. Maintenance of the district includes snow removal and sanding, crack sealing, pothole patching, drainage maintenance, sweeping, sign maintenance, chip sealing, and other maintenance as necessary to preserve the road improvements. Maintenance of the district is estimated to cost $9,735 per year, and each benefiting property is proposed to be levied and assessed $295 per year. This is the same maintenance assessment since the creation of the district in 2023, and we recommend no change to this part of the assessment. The cost of the improvements for this district were estimated at $321,956.19, including the 5% requirement to the R I D revolving fund. The original improvement or debt assessment was set at $1,005 per property per year in order to pay off the original construction estimate over 15 years. Actual construction costs were lower than anticipated, totaling $214,726.42. With this lower cost, we can lower the improvement portion of the assessment from $1,005 per property per year to $654.95 per property per year until the debt is repaid approximately another 14 years. Legal notice of the assessment in this public hearing was sent to all benefiting property owners and published in the Helena Independent Record on August 16 and August 23, 2025. As of yesterday, no written testimony has been received. Staff recommend approval of the resolution to levy and assess the district and lower that debt assessment. Happy to take any questions. Thank you.
This is, so far, my favorite special districts assessment report that you've given. I just think it's, things come in under the expected cost, and we get to lower people's property taxes on a project, and anyway, thank you. Is there any questions from?
Just if I might, any particular things that seem to make a difference and kept the cost down?
Chair Payne, Commissioner Rolfe, on this specific project, I think we were able to get really good asphalt prices, in particular, last year when this part of the project was done. There's some good competition right now for asphalt, and so those prices are coming in pretty competitively, so that's very helpful. The other thing with these districts, when we put these initial assessments together, we often do that, you know, to prepare numbers for the petition that must be circulated among the residents prior to district creation. And with that, that petition process can take, it really can take some time, and we never really know how much time that'll take, if it'll come back in a month, it'll come back in six months, in a year. We do try to build in a little bit of contingency because of that, knowing how long it takes to create one of these districts. We often end up having a whole nother season go by before we're completing construction. So with that, we want to make sure that those initial estimates that we give people, that they sign up for, that they're comfortable with in that petition, are going to be, you know, the prices that they're going to pay, or at least no higher than that is our goal. You know, as we deal with periods of a little bit more uncertainty and inflation, that's particularly, you know, important. So we do, I do just want to be clear that we do put contingency into our original estimates. So oftentimes, these do come in a little bit under, but specifically for this one, like I said, really, really great asphalt prices on this, so we're really pleased to see that.
I'd just like to make a comment, if I might, that I think this is an example of staff really doing their job well and taking advantage of some good opportunity on pricing. And, you know, they're trying to be, trying to work to the advantage of the taxpayer, people that are paying for it, and thank you for that extra effort.
Chair Payne, Commissioner Rolfe, you're welcome. And I would just say, you know, particularly with these loans, obviously, the Public Works Department manages the construction of this, but this does have a lot of hands in the county once this process is complete. So we have to work closely with our accounting department, our finance team, our tax desk, all of those folks, you know, have to have a hand in this as well to make this happen. So it's a broader effort than just public works with this.
Thank you, Jessica. Any further comments from the commission? Is there any public comment? There's nobody here pounding on the table saying they want us to raise their taxes. Seeing no public comment, I would entertain a motion.
Chair Payne, I'd move that we approve Resolution 2025-96 to levy and assess the Juniper Stable Rural Improvement District as presented.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve Resolution 2025-96, as presented by Jessica Makas. Is there any further comments from the commission? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving Resolution 2025-96 to levy and assess the Juniper Stable Rural Improvement District Number 2023-3, as presented by Jessica Makas, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Next. Action Item Number 3D, Resolution 2025-97, to be presented by Jessica Makas. Go for it, Jessica.
Thank you, Chair Payne. Again, for the record, Jessica Makas, Special District's Coordinator for Lewis and Clark County. Today, you'll be holding a public hearing to hear comments and objections regarding the final adoption of Resolution 2025-97 to levy and assess an annual special assessment upon each benefiting property within the Lucky Strike Rural Improvement District. There are a total of nine benefiting properties in this district, and this is located just between Glass Drive and Collins Drive in the North Valley. The Lucky Strike R I D was created in 2024 to improve and maintain Lucky Strike Road. Improvements for the district included drainage remediation and culvert installation, and additional, and the addition of gravel material, watering, grading, and compaction of the new material over the full extent of Lucky Strike Road. Maintenance of the district includes snow removal and sanding, grading, gravel maintenance, culvert and drainage maintenance, signage, and other maintenance as necessary to preserve the road improvements. Maintenance of the district is estimated to cost $2,880 per year, and each benefiting property is proposed to be assessed $320 per year. This is the same maintenance assessment since this district was created last year, and we recommend no change to the maintenance component of the assessment. The cost of improvements was initially estimated to total $78,079, including the 5% requirement to the R I D revolving fund. The original improvement or debt assessment was set at $894 per property per year in order to pay off the original construction estimate over 15 years. Actual construction costs were much lower than anticipated, due primarily to some drainage work that was unnecessary, that was part of the original estimate, and that total construction cost was $29,984.74. With this lower cost, we can lower the improvement portion of the assessment from $894 per property per year to $318.33 per property per year until the debt is repaid, which is approximately 14 more years. Legal notice of the assessment in this public hearing was sent to all benefiting property owners and published in the Helena Independent Record on August 16 and August 23, 2025. As of yesterday, no written testimony has been received. Staff recommend approval of the resolution to levy and assess the district and lower that debt component of the assessment. I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Is there any questions from the commission? Andy? Tom?
Yes.
Is there any public comment on this? Oop, we have public comment. Great. Come forward, state your name, and tell us what you think.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Ken Liston. I'm one of the residents on Lucky Strike. I am here to support this continued improvement on our properties. The only question that I've got is that this, right away now, belongs to the county, as I understand it, correct? The road belongs to the county, I believe.
It belongs, it's...
It doesn't?
This confuses me. Nico, could you?
Public, but not the county. Okay. Well, we've got a couple of residents out there that collect things, shall we say? And one of them is still out there on the road. For the last two years, it has not moved, and I'd like to see it addressed.
And what was it that's?
It's a motor home.
A motor. And which road is it on?
Lucky Strike. Anyway, I wanted to make that known. I'm very happy, otherwise, with what Jess has done, and what the county has done, and what they've continued to do, and, you know, I'm in support of the continued work that's going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Liston. Any further public comment? Okay, so we have a public comment, and now... Let's, I'll entertain a motion on this resolution.
Chair Payne, I'm moved to approve Resolution 2025-97 to levy and assess the Lucky Strike Rural Improvement District Number 2024-1, as explained by Jessica Makas.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve Resolution 2025-97. Is there any further comment from the commission?
Just a thought.
Yes.
We're starting to see some good deals on some of the road construction. We're, we're starting to see some good deals on some of the road construction projects and, and I just think it's wonderful that the, the staff has taken advantage of the lower prices and, and trying to keep the price down for people. I wonder if maybe some of that, there was some artificial price increase when the federal government told us when we could spend money and how we could spend it, that, that maybe forced prices up a little bit unnaturally.
Interesting comment. Anything else? Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve Resolution 2025-97 as presented by Jessica Makers. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Um, action item number 3E, Resolution 2025-98 to levy and assess the Canal Circle Rural Improvement District number 2025-2, presented by Jessica Makers.
Thank you, Chair Payne. Again, for the record, Jessica Makers, Special Districts Coordinator for Lewis and Clark County. Today is a public hearing regarding the final adoption of Resolution 2025-98 to levy and assess an annual assessment of $210 upon benefiting properties to provide annual maintenance on road improvements within the Canal Circle Rural Improvement District. This is the third and final public hearing in the RID creation process. The proposed district is located west off Lake Helena Drive, about a quarter mile south of the Lake Helena Drive Canyon Ferry Road intersection. We can see Canal Circle Drive highlighted, and the properties that benefit are just located right outside the perimeter of that blue circle on, on the screen there. The resolution of intention to create the Canal Circle RID was passed by the Commission on June 26, 2025, after receiving a petition signed by 58% of property owners within the district. This opened a 30-day comment and protest period, and legal notice of the intention to create the district was sent to all benefiting property owners and published, published in the Helena Independent Record on June 28th and July 5th, 2025. The comment and protest period closed on July 30th, 2025, and no protest was received. The Canal Circle RID was created through public hearing by the Commission on July 31st, 2025. The general character of improvements includes the installation of a 2 1/2 inch asphalt overlay and chip and fog sealing on the full extent of Canal Circle. Improvements also include a culvert replacement at the Canal Circle and Lake Helena Drive intersection. This project is part of the Lewis and Clark County Road Prioritization Effort, and the Public Works Department has budgeted the cost of improvements into the fiscal year '26 road project budget. Road Department staff completed the preparation of the work, and the paving was completed by cap paving with a chip and fog seal by Bullock Contracting. The general character of maintenance will include snow plowing and sanding, pothole patching, crack sealing, chip sealing, sweeping, drainage maintenance, and other maintenance as needed to preserve the road improvements. Annual maintenance is estimated to total $2,520, and each benefiting property is proposed to be levied a total maintenance assessment of $210 per property per year. Upon passage of the resolution to create the Canal Circle RID, legal notice of this public hearing to levy and assess the district was mailed to all benefiting property owners and also published in the Helena Independent Record on August 16th and August 23rd, 2025. As of yesterday, no written testimony has been received. Staff recommend approval of Resolution 2025-98 to levy and assess the Canal Circle Rural Improvement District, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Jessica. Is there any questions from the Commission? Seeing no questions from the Commission, is there any public comment? Seeing no public comment, could we have a motion, please?
Chair Payne had moved that we approve Resolution 2025-98 to levy and assess the Canal Circle Rural Improvement District number 2025-2 as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve Resolution 2025-98 as presented by Jessica Makers. Is there any further comment from the Commission? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the resolution as explained indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Action item 3F, Resolution 2025-99 to levy and assess the North Hills Rural Improvement District number 2025-3, again presented to us by Jessica Makers. Jessica, tell us what you want.
Thank you, Chair Payne. Again, Jessica Makers, Special Districts Coordinator for Lewis and Clark County. Today is a public hearing regarding the final adoption of Resolution 2025-99 to levy and assess a special assessment of $219.56 for a period of 15 years upon each benefiting property within the North Hills Rural Improvement District. This assessment will be used to repay financing of district improvements. The resolution also includes an annual assessment of $334 upon benefiting properties to provide annual maintenance on these improvements. This is the third and final public hearing in the RID creation process. The proposed district is located in the North Hills area between Glass Drive and Collins Drive, just north of, oops, excuse me, this is, I think, oh, sorry, it's just the other side. Sorry, excuse me. Again, yeah, located just between Glass Drive and Collins Drive, north of Wootton Road, and there are 41 benefiting properties in this district. The resolution of intention to create the North Hills RID was passed by the Commission on June 26, 2025, after receiving a petition signed by 53% of property owners within the district. This opened a 30-day comment and protest period, and legal notice of the intention to create the district was sent to all benefiting property owners and published in the Helena Independent Record on June 28th and July 5th, 2025. The comment and protest period closed on July 30th, 2025, and two protests, protests were received totaling 4.8%. The North Hills RID was created through public hearing by the Commission on July 31st, 2025. The general character of improvements for this district include drainage remediation, including the addition of culverts and gravel fill, the addition of gravel surfacing throughout the road network, and this, this covers Sleeping Giant View Drive, Pond Court, No Creek Court, and a small portion of Snowdrift Road within this boundary that you see. Financing of these improvements is estimated to total $87,429. Each benefiting property is proposed to be levied a 15-year debt service assessment of $219.56 per year. The general character of maintenance will include snow plowing, sanding, grading, material maintenance, drainage maintenance, signage, and other items as needed to preserve the road improvements. Annual maintenance is estimated to total $13,694, and each benefiting property is proposed to be levied a maintenance assessment of $334 per year. The total proposed assessment is $553.56 per property per year for the first 15 years, and then dropping just to the maintenance assessment after that loan is repaid. Upon passage of the resolution to create a district, the legal notice of this public hearing to levy and assess the district was mailed to all benefiting property owners and also published in the Helena Independent Record on August 16th and August 23rd, 2025. As of yesterday, no written testimony has been received. Staff recommend approval of Resolution 2025-99 to levy and assess the North Hills Rural Improvement District, and I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Is there any questions from the Commission?
None here.
Seeing none, is there any public comment? Come forward and state your name.
Good morning, I'm Rachel Nolan. I'm a resident on Sleeping Giant, just here in support of the petition, and just to, I guess, provide anecdotal evidence that this is just not getting any better. And as Jessica mentioned, we do have the vast majority of support from the people, the residents who live in the area, and I would implore you to pass the resolution today. Thank you.
Thank you for coming in. Any other public comment?
Hi, my name is Catherine Pinniger, and I'm also a resident on Sleeping Giant View, and I was one of the people that also talked to all our neighbors, and, yeah, we, it would be really great to have some road work, so, thank you.
Thank you for coming in. It's really helpful to have the input from the people who have really worked to get this done.
I'm Steve Nice, I'm also one of the residents on No Creek, and just to give some context, I mean, how bad it is right now, while driving on the other side of the road to avoid certain holes and potholes, and I have a horse trailer, and for me to get my horses out, I mean, it's, it's a project to try to navigate the road, so definitely something that needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to warn you, you know, those potholes and, and bad roads, they keep people driving more circumspectly, they don't drive as fast, and then you get the road paved, and then we've got complaints about speeding, so, you know, pick your poison. Public comment, oh, now we need a motion. I would entertain a motion.
Chair Payne, I would move to approve Resolution 2025-99 to levy and assess North Hills Rural Improvement District number 2025-3, as explained by Jessica Makers. Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve this Resolution 2025-99 as presented by Jessica Makers. Is there any further comment from the Commission? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving this resolution indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks to all your hard work in getting this before us.
This is the operator.
I know, she is the queen. Our, action item 3G, Intercap Loan Application to the Montana Board of Investments, presenting, presented by Jessica Makers. Jessica?
Okay, thanks, Chair Payne. Last item today for me. Attached for your consideration is a copy of the Intercap Loan Application to be submitted to the Montana Board of Investments. This is an electronic process, but a copy of that application has been included for you. The loan request is in the amount of $87,428.09, and is intended to fund the road improvements within the North Hills RID that we just discussed. This district, again, is located in the North Hills area between Glass Drive and Collins Drive, just north of Wootton Road, and there are 41 benefiting properties in the district. The improvements to the district, the improvements in the district to be funded through this loan request include drainage remediation and the installation of culverts and gravel surfacing throughout the road network. Financing of these improvements is estimated to total $87,428.09, and benefiting property owners will be assessed $219.56 per year for a period of 15 years until the debt is repaid. Our previous agenda item, Resolution 2025-99 to levy and assess the North Hills RID was just adopted, and therefore, we can take this next step and apply for this loan. The Intercap program uses a variable interest rate set on February 16th of each year. Currently, the interest rate is 5%. The 10-year average rate is 3.2, excuse me, 3.27%, and the overall average since the program began in 1987 is 3.95%, so a competitive rate for us. Intercap applications are submitted electronically, and again, that, that application copy is included in your packet for your review. If approved today, the Public Works Department will submit a final application and move forward with the procurement of improvements for this new district. Staff recommend approval of the attached loan application, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Is there any questions from the Commission?
None here.
Okay, is there any public comment? Seeing no public comment, I will entertain a motion.
Chair Payne had moved that we approve the Intercap Loan Application to the Montana Board of Investments as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Let's see, already did that part. There's no further comment. Did I already ask for the motion? Yes, I did.
That was the motion, but I do have a comment.
I've got a comment from Commissioner Andy. Thank you, Andy. Go.
Thank you, Chair Payne. I just want to take a second, I think we're at the tail end of our RID review and renewal and season, I think, is that correct? I don't think we have much more time or meetings to get any more...
Or first, I think is the deadline.
Well, this is the end of August, so in terms of meetings, I think we're close. And I just wanted to thank you, Jessica, and Mr. Hash as well, and the rest of the team, Director Chambers and your whole team, that it's, it's a lot. And so, we have over 150 RIDs, and Jessica thoroughly goes through each one each season and determines whether they are on track or have needs for decreases, increases, or being left the same, other projects. And sometimes it's, it's nuanced, you might say, there's, there's complications to some of these, and depending on when they were organized and how long they've been around and all of those kinds of things, what set of laws they might be under in terms of what the legislature's done over the years. So just really appreciate your work and wanted to point that out, and as we, as was mentioned in the last item, you know, really appreciate folks coming out as well and participating in their neighborhoods, and that's how it works, is if you want work done and on the streets that you use every day, that you have to organize and participate and get out there and, and bring it to us, and we can partner with you to, to help get that done. But I really appreciate people taking responsibility for their own neighborhood streets and, and organizing, so, but thank you very much, appreciate your work, and glad that we're at the end of this season of RID work. Thank you, Chair Payne.
Thank you, Andy. Tom, anything?
I agree.
Yes. A, a comment that I would make is keeping your roads up is like keeping your fence painted or fixing the roof. It helps the, it benefits you personally if you have a, an attractive, well-presented, decent road, a piece of property out there. It will make it more valuable when someone else is wanting to buy it, and hopefully, you don't want to sell it, but sometimes things happen that we don't expect, and you better be having it in top drawer condition if you can. So, thank you for all your work, Jessica. I already asked for public comment.
Yeah, yeah.
I did. Okay.
Ready for a vote.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we approve the Intercap Loan Application to the Montana Board of Investments to help build this North Hills Rural Improvement District. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item 3H, the amended contract between Lewis and Clark County and Orion Planning and Design, presented by Lindsay Morgan. Go for it, Lindsay.
Good morning, Commissioners. Lindsay Morgan, Land Use Planner for Lewis and Clark County.
We need to talk slower.
Yes.
I mean, people might have been one...
I should have been an auctioneer.
Yes.
So today, you will be considering an amended contract between the County and Orion Planning and Design regarding a comprehensive audit and update to the county's subdivision regulations. Funding for the project has been included in the county planning department's budget. The original contract between the County and Orion was approved on March 3rd of 2022 in the amount of $90,000. The contract has been amended twice. Today's proposed amendment to the contract is to further extend the completion date until December 31st of this year. According to the scope of work under Exhibit A of the contract, the project will be completed in two phases. Phase one was... Phase one was the comprehensive audit, and then phase two was the update to the actual regulations. Phase one has been completed, and we are nearing completion of the public review draft of the subdivision regulations under phase two. The anticipated completion date would be no further than the end of this year. The amended contract has been vetted by Grants and Purchasing, our legal counsel, and our department, and therefore staff is recommending approval. And I'm available if you have any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Lindsay. Is there any questions from the commission? Seeing none, is there any public comment? Seeing no public comment, I would entertain a motion.
Chair Payne moved to approve the amended contract between Lewis and Clark County and Orion Planning and Design as explained by Lindsay Morgan.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the amended contract as described by Lindsay Morgan. Moved and seconded. Okay, I did that part.
Chair Payne, just a comment.
Oh, comment from the, last week, these guys let me do a motion and then do another motion, and I've been just nervous about it ever since. Okay, we need some discussion. Is there anything, comment from Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Chair Payne. Thank you, Planner Morgan. Just wanted to recognize the importance of this, and I'm glad that we're taking the time necessary to do this right because it's really important. And we've updated our growth policy. Next, this effort to update our subdivision regulations along with the joint infrastructure study, which we'll be talking about here in a second, and ultimately updating our zoning regulations, all of that kind of falls into place here. But we don't want to rush. We want to make sure we involve the public at a high level and as often as possible. And as well, we want to get it right. So I'm very much in favor of continuing our partnership and doing this right. So thank you very much for bringing this forward. Happy to support. Thanks, Chair Payne.
Thank you. Tom, anything?
Just, would it be fair to say that there are some of the things that might have happened in the legislature would have affected what we're trying to accomplish here? And so making sure all that is incorporated into the final product is important. And that probably accounts for part of the delay.
Lynn, do you have anything?
Chair Payne, Commissioner Rolf, yes, that those changes are being incorporated into this draft.
We have to be prepared for change. Okay. Is there, is there any public comment on this? Seeing no public comment. Motion, please.
Chair, we already have a motion in a second.
You saved me this time. Thank you. Is, okay. Then let's, all those in favor of approving the amended contract between Lewis and Clark County and Great West, oop, that's the wrong one. Amended contract between Lewis and Clark County and Orion Planning and Design as described by Lindsay Morgan indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Next on our agenda, amended contract between Lewis and Clark County and Great West Engineering, also to be presented by Lindsay Morgan.
Good morning again, Commissioners. Lindsay Morgan, land use planner for Lewis and Clark County. Today you will be considering an amended contract between the county and Great West Engineering regarding an infrastructure study for both the county and the city of Helena. Funding for the county's share of this project is through ARPA. And the county has entered into an interlocal agreement with the city regarding compensation for the county, to the county for the city's share of this project. The original contract between the county and Great West Engineering was approved on August 20th of 2024 in the amount of $351,678. The proposed amendment to the contract is to extend the completion date until December 31st of this year. This project is aimed at preparing an infrastructure study regarding the extension of city infrastructure and connection of existing and future non-city infrastructure to city infrastructure within the urban standards boundary. This infrastructure will include water, wastewater treatment, stormwater, and solid waste facilities, and then also transportation systems. According to the scope of work under Exhibit A of this contract, which was included in your packet, the project consists of seven tasks. Great West Engineering is finalizing Task Three, the report regarding the existing systems evaluation. And then they are currently working on Tasks Four, which is the growth area analysis and projections, and Five, which is the alternatives evaluations. As this amended contract has been vetted by our Grants and Purchasing Department using our legally approved contract template, and our department, staff is recommending approval. And again, I'm available for any questions.
I have a question, Lindsay. The county has recently been participating in the Metropolitan Planning Organization as based on our increase in population. And that has to do with transportation systems. And is, does this contract with Great West Engineering and the information they're providing, does that help with that, or is this a whole different? Can you explain? We've got a meeting this afternoon, and I want to know what I'm getting into.
So Chair Payne, this project does touch on, you know, transportation within that urban standards boundary, but it is more higher level when it comes to the transportation side of things with this specific project because we do have the MPO, and then we also have the city doing the Greater Helena Area Long Range Transportation System update. So both of those projects are going to be more heavy on the transportation aspect of this, for this area, more so than what you find with the joint infrastructure study. I don't know if Jenny has any additional comments on that regarding like MPO or?
Jenny, could you?
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. For the record, my name is Jenny Chambers, Lewis and Clark County Public Works and Planning Department Director. Lindsay did a good job on answering that question. But yeah, just to provide a little bit of detail. So the infrastructure study, of course, when you look at water, wastewater, stormwater, will certainly have transportation components that you have to address, whether that's sidewalks, curb and gutter, things to help with your stormwater runoff controls. So they will be looking at that through this infrastructure study. But as far as the traffic flow, congestion areas, things that we need to do from a development standpoint with the growth, that's going to be part of the MPO efforts. So the Metropolitan Planning Organization efforts and the group that we were working on as a long-range transportation plan. So as part of the MPO, we're required, the three entities, to have an updated long-range transportation plan. That that project has kicked off. There's a consultant on staff through the city of Helena to provide those services. And so there will be more opportunity, more discussion specifically for the public to engage in transportation needs and the long-range planning around transportation.
Thank you, Jenny. One of my concerns is that we've got people studying this, and they recommend this, and then there's another group studying this, and their recommendation is not, those things just concern me. Nope.
Chair Payne, one thing to offer is, you know, we talked about, you know, in the scope of service for this project, we talk about that it's one of several concurrent planning efforts in the county. And it is mentioned, you know, the long-range transportation system is mentioned as a part of that. So we wanted to make sure when we're working on some of these projects that our consultant is aware that we have other projects that are similar so that we can, you know, use each other's information and then also not do too much of the, you know, double work on projects. So.
Okay. Thank you, Lindsay. Any further questions from the commission? Is there any public comment on this matter? Seeing no public comment, let's have a motion.
Chair Payne had moved that we approve the amended contract between Lewis and Clark County and Great West Engineering as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the amended contract between Lewis and Clark County and Great West Engineering as presented by Lindsay Morgan. Is there any further comment from the commission? Seeing none, let's have a vote. All those in favor of approving the amended contract as presented by Lindsay Morgan indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Lindsay. Oh, now, the time has come. It's 10 o'clock. Do you want to take? See, every once in a while, we've got, we have to take a break just because. Okay, so we will take a seven-minute break and come right back. The order, we have come to the part of our agenda where we have the department directors' update. They've given me no indication what order I'm supposed to do this in. But I do have a list of who the department directors are. Is someone here from emergency management?
Chair Payne, Kyle Sturgill-Simon is out on some leave time this week, so he's not here today.
And Autumn is probably out on a fire someplace, being second in charge. Okay. And a snow show. Okay. Grants and purchasing, Ann McCully? Can you tell us what's going on?
Good morning, Chair Payne, Commissioners, Ann McCully, Director of the Grants and Procurement Department. I'm going to start with procurement. We saw a lot of success in procurement this past year. FY '25 was our first full year under the current procurement policy, which was updated in April of 2024. As you may recall, our new policy requires that Indian County staff engaged with procurement and contracting take a basic training. I'm happy to report that to date, 94 county staff have done the basic procurement training, and 65 staff have done the basic contracting training. So we have a lot of our county staff trained, and I appreciate the departments and directors in doing that. In FY '25, we had over 120 contract cover sheets with accompanying contracts come through our office, which many of those came before you two for approval. And we did over 30 formal solicitations. So these are the request for proposals, request for qualifications, and invitation for bids. So FY '25 was a big year for us. Actually, it's the most procurement and contracting we've seen since we started tracking this data in 2022. And again, I'd like to just thank each department, county administration, and yourselves for the support and diligence that our county is taking towards contracting and procurement. With respect to the American Rescue Plan Act, happy to say that our department is fully staffed. Eliza Fieschetti started in mid-June and is our new ARPA and grant specialist. She has hit the ground, yes.
Could you move your microphone? I'm having a little trouble understanding you.
Yeah.
So, and it's important.
Is that better for you?
I just, yeah, I hope it is.
Eliza has hit the ground running and is taking the lead on all of our remaining ARPA and minimum allocation grants that we still have active. As of June 30th, we have expended over $11.6 million of our direct ARPA allocation. This is about 86% of those funds, and we are well on track to have them fully expended by December 31, 2026. We are also in preparation and planning phase of the single audit portion of our annual county audit that we have done, which again will include our direct ARPA funds and our minimum allocation grants. And Eliza is jumping right into that as well. With respect to grants, community development block grants that are the funds that we receive through the Montana Department of Commerce and through housing and urban development at the federal level. We recently closed out our CDBG Economic Development Grant that was with Florence Curtin in. This was for $525,000 to help in the renovation and expansion of their residential and childcare programs at their Cooney Home Facility. Florence Curtin matched these funds with about over $3 million of their own funding that also was part of the acquisition of that property. We have an open CDBG public facility grant right now with the Craig County Water and Sewer District. This is to conduct necessary sewer upgrades with the Barnes Lane properties. These properties are currently on individual septic systems, and this project will abandon those systems and tie them into the district's main sewer and treatments program. This is a $401,000 CDBG award that Craig Water Sewer District is matching with $525,000 of other grant funds. The bidding for the project is complete, and construction is planned for this fall, to be completed by this fall, which is excellent for that community. Looking forward, we anticipate submitting a CDBG planning grant this coming fall to complete a preliminary architectural report for a public safety center in Lincoln. This will be a collaborative project with the Lincoln Rural Fire District, the Lincoln Ambulance District, and the Lewis and Clark County Sheriff's Office. This is just a planning phase, so just looking at the location, the property, and what could potentially be accomplished on that. Montana Department of Commerce has not yet released their CDBG grant applications call for this fall, but I anticipate it coming out in the next month, and that application will come before you for approval before submitting. Other grant activities on the horizon, we have submitted a pre-application to the Montana Fish, Wildlife, and Parks Land and Water Conservation Fund Program. This would be for a new playground at the fairgrounds. We hope to hear from FWP next week with an invitation to submit a full application. So the pre-op is just kind of a one-pager, letting them know that we're interested. And then hopefully we get that invite by next week. Those would be due at the end of November. And again, those will come before you for approval and consideration before submitting. And lastly, I'll touch quickly on the national opioid settlement. Department staff are continuing to work with the Lewis and Clark Metro Region Opioid Abatement Governance Committee, which is a mouthful, and Commissioner Rolf sits on that committee. This is the distribution, for the distribution of Montana Opioid Abatement Trust, or what we refer to as MOAT funds, that are designated to our county. To date, we have six projects that have been funded for a total of $662,000 through that MOAT program funding. There's approximately $340,000 remaining for this current fiscal year, and the committee will be meeting at the end of September to review new applications. And then Lewis and Clark County is also the direct recipient of opioid settlement funds. So these funds are outside of the funds that are going to the state trust and are under the jurisdiction of this commission directly. The balance of those direct settlement funds is currently $370,000. I anticipate annual settlement funds to be approximately $80,000 for the next five years, and then they're going to go incrementally down from then, at least through 2038. Eligible uses for these settlement funds include activities related to the prevention, treatment, and recovery of opioid or other substance or coacorn use disorders. And staff will be meeting here in a couple weeks to just discuss some recommendations for utilizing those funds that again will come before this commission for your consideration. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Ann. Andy, do you have any questions?
Chair Payne, I don't have any questions, but wow, and thanks for all the great work. Thank your team, please.
I will, thank you.
Thanks.
Tom, do you have any comments or questions?
Your mic's not on.
About that, the ARPA funds and I think the Inflation Reduction Act funds have deadlines on them. Do you recall about how much is left to be spent to complete those projects?
Commissioner Payne, Commissioner Rolf, with respect to the ARPA funding, we have about, it's a little less than $2 million to fully expend out on that. The Inflation Reduction Act, the only direct grant that the county received from that is the Energy Efficiency Conservation Block Grant. And actually, we hope to submit for that this week and close it out. And I can't recall what the deadline is on that program, but I think it's June of 26 for our specific grant.
And if I remember right, if I might, the ARPA grants have to be completed by the end of next year, 26, isn't that right?
The end of the calendar year, Commissioner Rolf, yes. Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks for your report, Ann.
Thank you.
Next up is James Thomas with our IT Systems.
Chair Payne, Commissioners, good morning.
Chair Payne, Commissioners, good morning.
Good morning.
James Thomas, I am the IT Director for city and the county. Give you some highlights that we've gone through staffing-wise. We recently filled a new position that was part of a reorganization. We filled the customer support supervisor position. So we placed a line supervisor over our help desk team. And what we've done is we've reduced the supervision tasks on our operations and security manager. Our goal with this is to get our operations and security manager sort of back into a 40-hour work week and give her time, more time, to focus on some of the higher priority security issues that we want to keep abreast of. We'll have a couple more positions that we're going to open fairly soon. Since we were able to hire internally for our customer support position, we received nine applications, we interviewed four candidates. Our internal person who was holding the customer support lead position was the successful candidate, but that did open a customer support specialist or a line help desk position. So we're going to be posting that fairly soon. And then we have two more positions that are going to be coming up that were part of our request in our fiscal year '26, which is a cybersecurity analyst and also our technical implementation manager, basically a project support person. So we're going to get those moving fairly soon. Our after-hours support phone, though we provide the 24-by-7 number for basically anyone to call for any IT needs, we're running an average of 10 calls per month after hours, so weekends, nights, whatever it might be. The majority of calls are coming from law enforcement and/or the detention center. And most of those are fairly simple, straightforward, account passwords, resets, things like that. We have been evaluating some of the self-help portals, and we are taking a very, very careful look at those so that we do not open a new security risk. So some of the highlights for our projects. Our network modernization has been a long-running project. One year ago, I presented to you that we were working on our wide-area network. Throw some acronyms at you, that's called the WAN, W-A-N. This connects our building to buildings, basically make sure we keep all our buildings connected to each other and to our main network. We completed that phase. We've got one outstanding request, which was to add an additional network connection to the transfer station, so they'll have two network connections. Basically, if one goes out, they'll be running on the other. We've implemented redundancy wherever we can on the wide-area network. We are currently working on our Phase Two, hoping to get that completed here this month. Phase Two is a new acronym called the LAN, Local Area Network, that is inside each building. So those are the network switches that connect all the computers and phones to our main network. We are right now at about 90% completion. I'm probably a little optimistic there. We've got five main buildings left to work on. Two of them are rather big, the courthouse and the detention center. We've been in the detention center for probably about the last two weeks. It's kind of slow-going. We get escorted to different areas of the detention center with one of the detention center staff so that we can get the network work done. That does slow us down a little bit, but we're trying to take a very careful approach to that. We've also got the Public Works Complex, so that's a fairly large one. And then the fairgrounds and the transfer station itself. So those are our remaining buildings that we have not been in yet to get the upgrades complete. The third phase of that network modernization project, another acronym, no, that one is the wireless network. So inside a lot of the buildings, we've got wireless networking, we've got it in this room, one across the hall. We worked with the purchasing department, the county purchasing, and we were able to work through a cooperative contracting source called Sourcewell. And what it did was got us a price point to where we could replace all the devices and expand by another 25 devices for basically still less than we had budgeted for in our CIP, Capital Improvement Plan. So that third phase of the project is, is coming up. And what we're going to be able to do, along with replacing all the devices to get them up to current standards, we're going to expand our wireless footprint. So we're going to cover areas and buildings where it's been requested. We've got fire stations, two current ones, and a new one coming. They've requested wireless access for their vehicles because the vehicles receive data. So we're going to be able to expand to those areas. Also, fourth floor of this building, we're going to be able to provide better wireless service. So a lot of laptops and mobile devices will be able to connect a little easier. We've got two new upcoming projects. You'll be seeing those coming for you for contracts here very soon. We are expanding our internet connection, so keeping the city and county, the whole organization connected to the internet, cloud services, et cetera. It's where all your email comes from. We are going to add a second redundant network to the internet. And so we're going to have a separate provider, so we'll have two providers at the same time. And what our goal will be is that both of those connections are live 100% of the time. So if one provider needs an upgrade or has a problem, we will run on the other provider without any real interruption. So that's our goal with that upgrade. We are working through contracting with that right now, also through procurement services right now, but hopefully soon, we'll have that ready to come before you. We are also working on a replacement phone system. So our current phone system that's throughout the organization is nearing its end of life, and we want to be able to basically upgrade that, bring new technology in. We are evaluating a cloud-based system. So instead of replacing hardware, we still have devices on the desk, but backend hardware servers and software that we've been maintaining for 20-plus years upgrading, we're going to look to move all of that outside to the cloud. Also why we're interested in exploring that second internet connection so that we have uninterrupted service. So we're working through that one. In fact, some of my team right now is meeting with departments to get an idea of what their needs are for a phone system so that we can adequately scale the phone system. We don't buy too big that we can't afford in two years, and we don't buy too small that can't provide the services we need. So they're meeting with departments to get an idea of what, what they need in phone systems. Some quick notes on cybersecurity. I always like to throw some things in there. We have been very busy getting updates, patches installed on all the computers throughout the organization, in some cases, replacing the entire computer when it can't be upgraded. We've got a big one coming up that Microsoft announced the end of life for Windows 10. So any Windows 10 device basically is coming off the network. That date is October 14th, so it's just around the corner. Any device that cannot be upgraded has to be replaced. So we're swapping out computers. In fact, they were over at the detention center yesterday installing new computers that could not take an upgrade. On a broad scale, cybersecurity is noteworthy, if you've seen the news or if you haven't. Nevada State had two days of an outage. They called it a network security incident, but the new reports coming out are basically saying there is some data that was basically outside their network. So data got out of control from state resources. So that's a fairly big one, we're just keeping an eye on it. And interestingly, but not surprisingly, the first AI-generated ransomware has already been created and released on the world. So we try to keep abreast of those and, and install patches, updates, and provide as much security as possible. I would be happy to entertain any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, James. That was, you're going to ask a question?
Well, Chair Payne, if you insist.
No, I didn't. I was thinking, oh my God.
I didn't.
It's frightening.
I was not going to ask a question, but I'll thank you, as I did, Ann. And there's several departments, Chair Payne, that their clientele is the other department, so you have to work with everyone and, and the public, of course, but just appreciate that.
Thank you.
Kind of throughout the, throughout our team, so.
I, I tend to think of you folks as part of our, our law enforcement. You protect us from the bad guys out there, and I appreciate it. Tom?
I too appreciate your efficiency. And it seems like whenever I have a question, they, they help me out right away, and I appreciate that, and I'm sure, and I'm sure that's going through the whole organization, so.
Chair Payne, Commissioner Rolf, thank you.
Thank you, James. Next up is Drenda Neiman from the Health Department.
Good morning, Chair Payne, Commissioners. My name is Drenda Neiman. I am the Health Officer with Lewis and Clark Public Health. Just some highlights of operations that have been happening in the Health Department in the last several months. We did have our first measles case.
Say that again.
Yes, ma'am. We had our first measles case in our county.
Thank you for the measles, but.
Yeah. I will also slow my speech and maybe just speaking too fast. My apologies. And with, with that, our response to the notification that we have a measles case, overall, the, the response went well. Our interaction with the state, our state partners went well. It was a situation where there was lots of travel and lots of exposure in states outside of Montana and exposures outside of Lewis and Clark County. So we were able to, there was minimal impact to other residents in the county, which was really, really great under the circumstances. Unfortunate for some of the other states that were involved in the exposures, but the individual who was tested positive is, is doing well and is recovering. We also are.
What's the age?
We, this individual is an adolescent.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. We have also added measles surveillance in our wastewater surveillance. So up to this point, we've been doing COVID and flu and RSV surveillance in our wastewater systems, both Helena and East Helena, and we have now recently added measles. So we'll be watching for disease through wastewater, including measles. So that's a really, that's a great tool for us to understand what the disease burden is happening in our community. Speaking of disease burden, we are creeping up on respiratory illness season. So our, our team is scheduling clinics throughout the community, some public, but mostly our, our staff do a really good job of serving those high-risk environments like long, long-term care and assisted living facilities. So our team goes into those facilities and takes care of the vaccination needs. We do have a couple of public clinics happening. The county staff will get to participate in a public clinic. We have a public clinic happening out in East Helena as well. But for the most part, our, our messaging is please get vaccinated, and vaccinations are available widespread through the community, pharmacies, primary care providers, and so forth. We've had a very, very busy outreach and mobile clinic season. Those activities have been very widespread. So we had some outreach and mobile clinic offerings at Food Share and Head Start, back-to-school events. We did a really fun activity up in Augusta where we offered the mobile clinic, but also did some fun activities with the kiddos. We had 34 kids come out to play dodgeball with us up in Augusta. We participate in the Tuesday showers, offering vaccinations and other resources there. Again, back-to-school events, St. Peter's Fun Fest, Moms on the Lawn, were available as a resource. And we do have our upcoming Community Baby Shower that's happening. Right now, we're collecting donations across the community through the, the end of October. You'll, you'll start to see pack-and-play cribs set out into the community, and so that's how we are collecting those donations for the purpose of the Community Baby Shower. The baby shower is for families in our community who wouldn't normally get a baby shower. And we know that baby showers are often the one thing that sets families up for success when it comes to the stuff they need to provide for their new baby coming home. And so the items being collected will be then given to families who need them. So if you have an opportunity, please do donate to those collection places throughout the community. The Community Baby Shower will be held in November. We did hold a well and septic workshop. Our staff offered information about how to protect your well and care for your septic systems. We had 50 attendees, and we'll, that very good turnout, and we're planning to do that as an annual event moving forward. We continue to participate in behavioral health efforts in our community. We held a Hope Summit back in June. That was for professional, professional development for substance misuse service providers in our community. And we continue to support the implementation of the Mobile Crisis Response Team through St. Peter's Health and the opening of the Journey Home by Minne Rivers Whole Health, which is coming soon, I'm hoping. We launched the 2025 Community Health Improvement Plan in partnership with the Healthy Together Steering Committee. The priorities outlined in the Health Improvement Plan include chronic disease, behavioral health, and housing. We encourage community participation in the coalitions who are charged with implementing the strategies in that plan. Looking forward to seeing all of the really great work that's going to happen in the next three years of that plan. The Water Quality Protection District has also been very busy. They completed their Grizzly Gulch project, which essentially created a new stream bed and kind of cleaned up that area. It's very beautiful. If you haven't had an opportunity to check out that Grizzly Gulch project, I, I do recommend that you take a drive or, or just jump on our website because we have a beautiful story, a story mapping that takes you through the whole project and explains the goals of the project and such. Upcoming, we have a septic inventory that has kicked off with a contractor who is helping us do an inventory of all of the septic systems in our county. We're hoping to use that information to address excess pollution contributions to our ground and surface waters and identify priority areas for septic system replacement and opportunities for connections to our municipal systems.
Excuse me, Drenda.
Yes, ma'am.
How is that survey being run? I mean, this is if I haven't heard about it and I live out in septic tank land.
Yeah. Chair Payne and Commissioners, we have hired, hired respect as the contractor. They've only just begun, and their methodology of how they're going about this will be multifaceted because there is no single source of information about the septic systems in our county, which is the challenge that we've run up against thus far. And so they'll be looking at current septic permits that we have on file at the Health Department, and then they're going to be doing some outreach to the residents as well. So you'll be hearing from the contractor who's helping us collect this information eventually. It'll take about a year to get the inventory complete, and they've, again, only just begun, so be on the watch.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. And then finally, we've just, our, continue to experience some woes in federal funding and changes to federal agencies within the Health Department. It hasn't impacted us significantly yet, but we continue to plan accordingly, knowing that federal funding in this next fiscal year, fiscal year '27, could significantly be impacted and reduced. So we're waiting as the federal process happens through their, through their budget allocation process to see what will be available for our local public health work. So there's a lot of unknowns when it comes to federal funding, and just changes to the way that federal agencies are doing their work is impacting the work at the local level. One example of that is just approval of vaccines. So you may have heard in the news that, the approval of flu vaccines and COVID vaccines, that's all been delayed. And so just recently, the Federal Drug Administration has approved the COVID vaccine, but we're now waiting for the ACIP, which is the committee that makes recommendations about who gets those vaccines. We have to wait for them to meet, and so it will delay our delivery of the COVID vaccine in particular. meet, and so it will delay our delivery of the COVID vaccine in particular. So that's an example of how the changes at the federal level is, will, and continue to impact the work that's happening at the local level. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Drenda. Any questions? Nope. Okay. Well, Drenda, keep up the good work and thank you for your report. Kevin Tenney from the Fairgrounds.
Thank you, Chair Payne. My name is Kevin Tenney. I'm the manager of the Lewis and Clark County Fairgrounds. I'll start off with a quick recap of the Last Chance Stampede and Fair. Overall, the Stampede and Fair was very successful for us. There were some issues, one of the biggest ones being traffic. Custer Avenue was backed up four miles. We did meet as soon as fair was over. We met with local law enforcement, sheriff, police, fire, ambulance, did a quick after-action meeting. And we've already come up with some possible solutions for 2026. We're going to start meeting in January instead of May, and we'll try to put a better plan together for traffic on Custer Avenue. Another issue that we're fixing right away is we are moving our music events back into Cool Alley Arena. We moved it into an open field a couple of years ago to, at the request of our rodeo committee, because turning that arena over for a rodeo in 12 hours is a headache. But the headache that moving it to the open field caused were greater. So we will be moving those concerts back into the Cool Alley Arena, possibly hold one on Tuesday and Wednesday, and then just the rodeo and other smaller events Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. The rodeo itself this year sold out all three nights. Again, that event's getting more popular. We're starting to get even better contestants. Cowgirls, cowboys are showing up from Cheyenne, Wyoming, where the big rodeo is going on at the same time as us. But overall, Stampede and Fair financially looks to be one of our better years. Some other things going on at the Fairgrounds right now. The paving project is commencing. Crews are down there working, tearing up some old millings, getting ready to pave. The city will be in on Tuesday to start laying the blacktop on our west parking lot. And then followed that, they'll be doing our main road coming in from Custer Avenue, followed by Sillsby Street getting paved. So we're excited because that main road coming in, it's, you need almost to be in four-wheel drive to get through that road. And I'm sorry to announce that post that sat right in the middle of the road, that power pole is no longer there. Anne McCauley touched on it a little bit, but we are going for a $350,000 grant to update or actually get a new playground at the Fairgrounds. The grant that she applied for is a matching grant. So we are currently, the foundation and myself are currently applying for grants to get those matches with the Bolger Foundation, Ash Grove Foundation, and potentially the Tracy Foundation are some potential avenues to go down, as well as the Kiwanis Club. And the Fairgrounds Foundation is going to financially support it as well. We understand this playground is not going to be financially beneficial to the Fairgrounds. It's not going to generate more revenue for the Fairgrounds, but however, it'd be a nice feature to have at the Fairgrounds. It'll get more families down there, give families more opportunities to have playgrounds for their children. Looking at our upcoming events, I did a countdown, and we have two weekends from now until May where the exhibit hall is not booked. One of those is, actually, both of them are holiday weekends. A lot of people don't like to do events on holiday weekends, but we are very busy. We're getting to the point right now, we're getting ready to put the plows on and get ready for the snow to fly and winterizing the grounds. With that, I'll open it up to questions.
That was a fabulous report. Thank you. I had the opportunity to serve on the Fair Board for a while, so I'm a little more aware of, one of my questions regarding the playground, are you going to get rid of the Rocket?
No, no. We are going to try to color coordinate our new playground with the Rocket. That's something we discussed a little bit at our foundation meeting yesterday. We will never get rid of the Rockets like.
Well, and I, you know, it's just, it's important to the history, you know. It's just part of our fairgrounds. Anything else?
Chair Payne, yes. Thank you for the commitment to the Rocket. The one good thing about that, we did go through a whole process of renovating and re, I guess, reworking the Rocket so a few years back. So it was a great, great effort, community effort with Helena College and also that. I'm glad it's still going strong.
Me as well.
And I'm glad that we're going to get a new playground eventually here. So thank you. Thank you, Anne, for the work on that. I was just going to mention one thing, talking about the traffic and all that, it is something that we heard about during fair and all of that, and you're going to be getting together to talk about possible future efforts. I was just, if willing, I was going to ask, make sure you include public works in that conversation. I think there's been discussion about what we may do, you know, the kind of planning for the front entrance as well as Green Meadow, the part that's our responsibility, I guess. So it may, some of that planning may contribute to those design efforts or planning efforts for the future and what we need out there for certain events. So I just, just a suggestion to include them in your discussions.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. And be honest, the best idea has come from Kevin Horn with the Public Works Department. He suggested, one of his suggestions was doing a traffic revision on Custer because there is that middle turn lane, pretty much a majority of it. He said there is a company, and I can't remember what their name was, but there is a company you can hire that will actually basically come out and do a revision. So we would have two westbound lanes. They would utilize that turn lane as a westbound lane and only one east, but that would open up more traffic. If you're in the right lane, you're turning on Green Meadow. If you're in the left lane, you're going to the main entrance. But that, that was one of the ideas I was throwing out there that myself sounded like a very good idea. Obviously, there's going to be some costs because you do have to hire this company. And do you know, Jenny, what the, Mountain West or something on?
Chair Payne, Commissioners, yes. Kevin Tenney is correct. There's a lot of traffic consultants out there that could help with the design, and Mountain West Holdings would be one of those companies.
Isn't part of the problem that that road is, part of it belongs to the department, it's state highway and then city, and the county isn't really in charge of that stretch of the road, isn't that right?
Commissioner, Chair Payne, that is correct.
So who's going to pay for the design?
The Fairgrounds. And it would be a temporary, it would be a temporary design. I don't, it would be more, from what I understand, it'd be more about, there would have to be people out there manning that road, cones, doing the work to, but it would, it would be something that the Fairgrounds would have to budget for. And obviously, if that's, when we start meeting in May or in January, that's something we'll look out to see what the cost would be of that. But I do know Sheriff Dutton would be very happy if we did something because he let me know that he got more phone calls this year than he has ever got on the traffic, so.
Part of that may have had to do with the scheduling of a baseball tournament that same weekend, and their parking, I mean, the way I looked at it, that baseball, that should not have happened. We should not have to compete for parking and traffic. And it was a statewide baseball tournament, so it impacted a lot of people, not only people going to our fair, but I was just appalled at the lack of coordination of timing. So, and I don't think that's probably your fault, but I'm hoping you will look into who I should call up and chew out.
Chair Payne, I will tell you, that was the Northwest Regional Babe Ruth Tournament. That is a tournament that's held on that weekend nationwide. If Helena were to put in a bid for it again, it would always fall on that weekend. I know it did happen one time prior to this. I believe it was like back in 2015. But I don't remember it causing as much issues as it did this year. But if Helena, the Babe Ruth Board would be who puts the bid in for that tournament. But it is that weekend every year all over the country, so this could potentially happen again.
Well, it will be an interesting problem to solve in the future. Tom, did you have anything?
No, I just, I think they've done a great job. Great to see all the work going on and the paving out there. And I thought, and I think the innovative idea of trading some paving for design work on the intersection of Henderson and Custer was a, was a good move. And so I appreciate the good efforts and congratulations on a financially successful fair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Frank, Cornwell Finance.
Morning, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Frank Cornwell, CFO of the county. Just, my update will be really brief. You guys get to see me next week on, I guess, next Thursday for the mill levy approval resolution or approval of the resolution for the mill levy sheet. That'll include the city's mill levies, the schools, districts' mill levies, and ours as well. So we are currently wrapping up and finalizing that sheet. A lot of work goes into it. We, a lot of coordination with those other entities, with Jessica and the RIDs. So we're just wrapping that up, and you'll be able to see the results of how that'll play out with our property taxes and so on on Thursday. So just, that's, that's that. You'll get more detail then. And then we're, you know, we've talked about this. We're continuing to work on our, our new financial system implementation. Jen Garber and her team downstairs in the accounting world is working really hard on that. And then they're also working on our audit and our preparation of our financial statements, our annual report or ACFOR. There's many names for that, I guess. So very busy down there, working to put all that together. Also, Amy Reeves puts in quite a bit of effort and work there, too, and she's been highly distracted by this election season with the, that's being held on in September. So lots going on, very busy, but more detail to come next week, and we'll have a much longer conversation.
Frank, just speaking of the elections, the elections are strictly in, for City of Helena, the mayor and the school, so it doesn't impact people who are not in the Helena School District?
Chair Payne.
Like East Helena, for example.
Yes, yes, that's what I believe. Yep. Yes.
Thank you. Any questions, Tom?
No.
Andy? Okay, we'll see you next week, Frank. Carrie DeRozier, could you come forward and tell us what's going on in your world?
All right. Good morning, Chair Payne, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Carrie DeRozier, Human Resources Director with the county. We've been busy on the recruitment front as always. Right now, we have 12 recruitments, things that are open, published online, and receiving applications for those jobs. We have four additional recruitments that are either in the scoring, interview, reference check, or job offer phase. We also have three, probably four, jobs that are in the development phase, meaning we know they're up and coming or working on job descriptions and getting the final approvals for those recruitments. For July 2025, we had seven new hires. Five of those were regular positions, and the other two were either short-term or temporary positions. We don't have any terminations for the month of July on the books right now. For the entire fiscal year of 2025, we processed 87 requisitions through our Kronos system, which means for recruitments, we open a requisition to start that process. So busy there, although it was slightly down from the year before. So this year, we had three collective bargaining agreements that we negotiated. Two of those have been finalized, and we've presented those at meetings in front of you, and you've approved those. We have one that we're still in the process of negotiating, and that's with the Lewis and Clark County Sheriff Employees Association. So we continue to work on that. We have one complaint that's being investigated. We've hired a third party to do that investigation for us, and we are working with one office on responding to a grievance. Our fiscal year turnaround was fairly busy. We had the first payroll in July, which included all of our health plan elections, all of our flex plan elections for the new year, and we also implemented almost all pay matrix adjustments for employees across the county. It's also kind of a busy time of year for payroll right now and benefits. We are either assisting with or responding to auditors for a couple of different areas, our annual audit, and also some new GASB requirements that we're providing information on. Christina's working on a workers' comp audit this week, and I've been working on stuff for an OPEB stuff, health plan and retiree liability stuff. So busy there. As far as the health plan, we are slightly higher than last year at this point for health plan expenses, just a little over $87,000. For plan year ending June 2025, we had, we paid $9.6 million in medical and prescription drug claims. This compared to 9.2 for the previous plan year. These numbers do not include stop-loss payments, so these would be like net payments. Members have paid about $1.4 million in claims for the plan year. And then July 2024, we implemented our 340B pharmacy program through PeerView. And based on the pricing that we had paid for the prior year, our, the program has saved our plan about $205,000 for the plan year. So that's an improvement, although our pharmacy claims went up for the plan year, we did save on those, so. For wellness, we have our fall screenings that start next week. We're doing two in the city-county building and one at Rocky. Those emails have gone out, schedules have gone out. We also have the availability for employees to go to St. Pete's for their wellness screenings if those fall ones do not work for them. The fall screenings are meant to catch up for employees that were hired right after our spring screening process and for members that want to retest in certain areas to get better incentives starting in January. So that's why we do the fall screenings. We also have two flu clinics anticipated for the month of October, one in the city-county building for employees and one over at the detention center area for anybody but helps with the detention staff and the sheriff's office employees to be able to participate. Let's see, safety. Kenny's been pretty busy on the safety front. They've put together a subcommittee at the courthouse, and they've been working on an active shooter policy, also emergency action plans for the building, and then active shooter procedures. Brandy's been helping with research and writing of policy language and working that through the committee that's been developed. Once, she's also been developing. Once, oh, she's also been developing maps to use in the emergency action plans. Once the policy, the plans and the procedures have all been finalized and approved, then we'll work on training employees in those areas on those three factors. And once we get past that, the building, then we have all the other buildings and offices within the counties to go through the same process, plans and procedures there. So that'll be an ongoing process for a couple of years, probably. We also have a hazard communication policy that we'll be bringing forward for your approval soon. We've been working on this for a while, working with other departments. The policy has been sent to departments and to collective bargaining agreement representatives for review and comment. We have further adjustments that we've made on that. And we also have some attachments that will be included with the policy that we're finalizing now. That includes like safety data sheet templates and examples as well as sample hazard communication plans. And once we get the overall policy adopted, again, we'll have to work on hazard communication plans that are specific to each department as well. And then I just wanted to provide a snapshot of fiscal year 2025 in a couple of interesting areas as far as recruitments and employees. When we're talking about regular and seasonal employees, it didn't include short-term or temporaries, but we hired 93 employees for fiscal year 25, which compared to 72 employees for fiscal year 24. As far as terminations go, we had 86 terminations in fiscal year 25 versus 88 for fiscal year 24. Now, in looking at all employees across the county, on average, we had 424.75 employees for fiscal year 25 versus just a little over 401 on average for fiscal year 24. Our turnover rate was a little bit higher, 26.2% for fiscal year 25. That was up slightly from 25.4% in fiscal year 24. For gross earnings, we had for fiscal year 25, $25,859,000, just over that amount. And in fiscal year 24, we paid for gross earnings, $24,339,000, just over that amount. So slight increase that you would, you would understand would go along with the slight COLA that employees were given. As far as what does our employee group look like right now? Our breakdown of male to female is 51.5% to 48.5%. Our average age of our employees is just under 44. And our average hourly rate for employees across the board is $30.62. And just under half of our employee group is covered under union representation. So that's all I have for you today, unless you have any questions for me.
Thank you. And the work that you do, of course, impacts every other department. So it's pretty darn important. Do you have any questions for Carrie?
If I might. The total, I think you mentioned 424 average employees, is that right?
That's correct.
And that's counting all the part times and everything like that?
Correct. That's part-time, short-term, temporary employees.
And how many positions are open at the end of, at the end of the fiscal year 25? How many positions did we have open?
I did not run that number. But, I mean, we're recruiting for 12 positions right now. We know we have some coming up.
Pretty close to that.
Yeah. In our detention center, we're down probably 16 positions. So I would say we're running close to 30 positions, 20 positions being vacant right now.
Thank you.
Andy, do you have anything? All right. Thank you. Carrie, appreciate your input. Extension Services. Is your microphone on?
Is it green? No, I'm green. Green for go. Alyssa Schmidt, Lewis and Clark County Extension. And I'm representing three different areas of extension. So I'll start with Chloe. Chloe Lindquist is our SNAP education agent and she is ecstatic because her numbers have been extended through February 6th of 2026. We thought we were going to lose her earlier, but she was able to stay. So that worked out well. She also coordinated a Lincoln Government Day as well as a Lincoln follow-up day. So we were able to meet with the school. 138 kids were given pencils from 4H. And she's also going to do a SNAP education workshop, six workshops with the kids. And that is four years in the making. So huge feather in her cap to be able to get that done. That will start in the next month, I believe. She'll be working with the PE teacher and their health instructor to educate elementary school kids on a full plate, reading their plate. We also met with the VA Outreach Group and we're working with them for the Master Gardener Program, helping them with their garden and their food security and food preservation. So that will be with our Sophia Franz-Lubers, if I say it correctly. She's our Ag Hort Agent, so she's going to be working with them as well as Chloe. Do you want to ask questions at this point or wait till the end?
Go ahead. Yeah.
Now, so for Sophia, she is our new Ag Agent. She asked me to read the following. She said, "In addition to all the help that she's offered in the day-to-day office, she has met with dozens of people for site visits, one of which was recently featured on KTZ, I believe, on Wednesday." She did a great job there. "200 Ag and Hort questions answered either via phone, in person, or on email, following up with individual questions for people regarding hay tests, all those different types of soil tests that we do for the community." She's doing a phenomenal job. She's very well received. She's working on her pest management license as well as her pesticide license. So those things will be coming forward for her in the fall. And last but not least was 4H, my personal favorite. I was very happy to be able to work with Kevin. Their staff was phenomenal for us. They did a great job and they were Johnny on the spot with anything from pig fights to all sorts of different things. They were there to help us as well as our volunteers. We had, in general, we have about 100 volunteers on staff and I would say the majority of them showed up, probably 80% showed up for multiple days in a row. The fair for us begins 10 days. It's 10 days long. So it ends on Saturday with the 4H Saturday night, but it starts actually 10 days before that with horse. And then we move into dog and then swine and all the different activities. So it's a longer process for us, but totally worth it. Our community was very, very supportive for us. And our president, Katie, gave me the following stats to share with you. Total animals sold, we had 59 beef sold, six goat, two poultry, 44 sheep, and 119 swine. So lots of bacon in Lewis and Clark County. I agree. Wow. I could give you the average prices of those, but I'll say poultry was a boon with $262 per pound.
Wait, $252?
$262 per pound.
Per pound of chicken?
How big were those chickens? There was just, I know, they were, they were in hot demand, supply and demand. There was only two. Beef was at $6.20 a pound. Goat was 15.67. Sheep, 6.35. And swine was at 7.30. So the kids were very, very pleased with their efforts throughout the year. Now, we could not have done that without our buyers. So we had 203 buyers total and we had 77 new buyers that showed up. So that was lovely to see. They showed up for both the indoor and the outdoor auction. The outdoor livestock auction, we grossed $746,109.25. With that auction, the indoor auction was $11,740. So I do hang out with auctioneers and speak pretty quickly. Paige did a fantastic job for us. We also had a silent auction and part of those proceeds would go to camp for the kids and that was $4,400. So our community absolutely stepped up and they let those kids shine. So we were very, very grateful to them. We had tons of people that came around, I mean, from all over the West. We had Alaska, we had Wyoming, we had a group from Poland that came through. We had a lot of different people. So I think everything was well represented for the 4H world. We also had Congress before fair. Congress is a week-long leadership training. We had 10 members from Lewis and Clark County come from the entire state. Stella Durand was our closing speaker. Stella is graduating from East Helena and she's a fantastic speaker. The leadership for Murdochs was sitting in the front row as she was saying thank you and goodbye to everyone with the waitstaff crying as they're leaving. And the owner leaned over and said, "And this is why we support 4H." So Lewis and Clark was well represented at those state events. Murdochs is a huge supporter for us. The other thing I wanted to mention, which was also in conjunction with Kevin at the fair, we were very honored to have David Hamilton represented as the spirit of the West. He is a 4H leader for us. He's the overall superintendent and Kevin delivered that trophy to him, a reward to him. So that was wonderful to see that highlighted as well for 4H. We had over 100 kids come out and run the arena and wave to the crowd and thank everybody for joining us and helping us to end the week. So that was a fun fair recap. And after fair, where the kids do a 4H camp, we had 64 kids go up to Loon Lake and learn how to line dance and swim and all the fun things of camp. Med kids, they did skits, they did all sorts of different things. So it was a fantastic week for the kids to just round out the whole summer.
Okay. Do you have any questions, Tom?
No.
Andy? Uh-oh.
Not a question, Chair Payne, but just congratulations on the great, great auction and sale and fair and all of that. Glad to hear Kevin's working with. Oh, great. We have a good team and appreciate all the work that doing in all the different facets of extension. So thank them.
No, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Chair. Thank you. Next up is Criminal Justice Services, Kelly McBride.
Anybody you need to stretch?
What?
Do you need to stretch?
We just took a seven-minute break, you know?
I'm just trying to be helpful.
Thank you, but we got to keep this moving along, you know?
Good morning.
That poor lady who's videoing this outside is, you know, we got to think of her.
Okay. Good morning, Chair Commissioners. My name is Kelly McBride. I am the Director of Your Department of Criminal Justice Services. And things going on with our department, staffing and personnel. We've been very busy with several hiring processes. The data analyst supervisor position is posted and will close on September 19th. And with Bob Buzzey's well-deserved promotion to Court Services and Diversion Supervisor, we now have an opening for a pretrial officer. Bob was a pretrial officer with us for two years and he applied for the, for the Court Services and Diversion Supervisor position. He was found to be the best candidate for the position with over 25 years' experience in diversion. And so he was given the position. Now we need to hire for his pretrial position. And that position also closes on September 19th. The third position that we have open is our data program analyst position. And I'm working with Kenny Gross in HR on tweaking that position before we put that out. So that's coming. That's, I'm sure, one of the positions that Carrie was talking about. Jail inspections, the July 23rd. I just have down that the inspection went smoothly. No one from my department actually went and thank you very much, Brandy and Jenny for, and Mac Commissioner for making that happen. We will be back and on board for the October 22nd jail inspection. Data and reporting, we are gearing up to launch new public dashboards once our data positions are filled. In the meantime, staff are creating graphs for our website that will show detention center census data with demographic breakdowns, pretrial outcomes, and pass program details. And those we have scheduled to go, be posted on the webpages the week of September 8th. So working with staff on that. We're doing our best to get it out there and hold it together until our actual data folks start. Communications, if you are on LinkedIn, Facebook, and/or Instagram, you may have seen our Meet the Team series. Every week, one of our staff members is featured. It's been pretty cool to see. So if you are on those, make sure you like those and share those. We're also working with Mad Ave Communications on a Criminal Justice 101-style booklet. This is a booklet that's been asked for by the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council's Jail Population Task Force. What they, what they found is wherever you're working in the criminal justice system, so if you're a new clerk, you know, court clerk, you may not know what it means to have a call for service or the booking information or what happens in all of those phases. So the more that we in the system know the whole process, the better we're able to help each other and the better we're able to support our community. So we've been asked to put the booklet together and we are. Yes.
Question, Kelly. This booklet is for employees of our criminal justice system or? I was thinking it was a handy do-it-yourself booklet for the people who are being held in the detention center.
We may, may use it for that too. Right now, the goal is to, to use that for employees. So court employee, really anybody, detention center employees, any, any new employee that is within that criminal justice system. And I think about all the members of the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council. And so really all of their staff would, when they're onboarding, that would be something that they would be given.
There is a group called CASA, Court Appointed Special Advocates.
Yes.
Would they be included in this education?
That's beautiful. I had not considered that, but yes. Thank you.
Okay, my work is done.
No, that's, that's absolutely.
Well, just an idea that, yeah, they do good work, but they need to be educated.
I think that's a great, and they need to be included as well.
Yeah.
Yeah. Good. Okay. I will, I will do that. I don't have a pen, but I will remember that. Criminal Justice Coordinating Council and the Citizens Advisory Committee. The next Criminal CJCC meeting is September 23rd. The Jail Population Task Force is focusing on a bunch of diversion activities and including bond alternatives, some tweaks to detention center management, that case management, multi-jurisdictional holds, lots of diversion efforts. And I think things are moving well that way. Training and conferences, this is kind of our training and conference time for criminal justices, services. We have two national conferences coming up and then some statewide conferences. Those provide our staff with continuing education units and just more knowledge and that, those networking opportunities. Also, the opportunity to build leadership and stay connected with our, with best practices. Court services, our caseloads remain high across the board. Our team continues to meet weekly. Bob is also launching a new Bond Review Roundtable. He's working with detention center staff, county attorney's office, public defender's office, Judge Piskulich and Judge Abbott. I'm sure I'm missing somebody. Bringing all of those people to the table every other week to go over the, the list of everyone who is being detained in our detention center on a cash bond and then determining if that bond should be requested to be lowered or eliminated. So really a conscious effort, looking at who's in the detention center and if they should be in the detention center or if they would do better in the community and would the community do better if they were in the community. So that is coming. Behavioral health, the Mat Bridges Program is nearing the end. So we've done a great job with Mat Bridges. That funding is coming to an end September 30. That funding is coming to an end September thirtieth, but we don't want to end the Mat Bridges Program. So we are looking at alternatives to ensure that we can cover the cost of the medication for individuals who have substance misuse disorders. And more on that, you'll, you'll, you'll see our faces as we're, as we're working through this. The heart program is moving forward. That staff continues to do great work and we're working with the state on that contract as well. That contract started out as a, as a quarterly contract and they're going to be moving it to the rest of the year. But, so that's something that we're, our team is working on. Our behavioral health team has been active with discharge planning, counseling addiction services, and education programming with notable successes, including placements into treatment programs, case coordination with outside providers, and new volunteer engagement. We continue to stay visible in the community through Hometown Helena, the DUI Task Force, and various statewide committees. I'll also be presenting in Gallatin County in September. We, I've been invited to present to their judges on one of their, their changes that they're making to their pretrial services program. So an honor to be asked and considered. And our team remains actively involved in regional and statewide conversations about justice system improvement. That covers the highlights for August. As always, thank you for your support and for championing the work of our staff. Please let me know if there are any areas you'd like me to expand on in future reports.
Thank you, Kelly. Any questions? Tom?
A question you, what's the progress now on how many people are doing every, meeting all the requirements of going without cash bond, of, of reporting to their meetings with the judicial system?
So individuals assigned to pretrial services, I just actually this morning was looking at the numbers. So we, we're, it's an average of about ninety-two percent of folks are making it to all their court appearances and not being arrested on a new charge. So we're, we're doing well with our pretrial service success rates.
And a follow-up question, if I might. Those maybe eight percent that don't, what happens to them?
So it's, it varies. It's all very individually based. Some, the officer works with that individual. If, if they don't make it to court, we, our officer tries to locate the individual, get them to court. If a warrant has been issued, tries to get them to court so that that warrant can be quashed and they don't end up back in the detention center. So setting them back up for success. If they are arrested on a new charge, they're, sometimes they're assigned back to pretrial services. Sometimes there's a cash bond that's placed on them so that, the hope is that they stay in the detention center or that's the judge's hope. So it really just depends, but that's a very small number that is ending up. And it's also tends to be a higher, it's misdemeanor charges and not felony charges that they're being rearrested on.
And another follow-up. What total, what are the total numbers now of the folks that you're working with?
We have an average of four hundred people on our caseload. And that's just people. No one comes with just one case. So it's, there's about four hundred individuals and, okay, some, some people must come with just one case because I think there's about six hundred and fifty cases that are being managed. So there's folks who come with three cases or four cases and, and we make sure to work with all of those cases until they're, come to their conclusion.
And, and how many people would be in the jail if it weren't for your, your work?
About four hundred, so.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Anything else? You, me, be excused from your podiumship.
Thank you, Chair.
Now, we're going to call on Jenny Chambers for Public Works.
Chair Payne, Commissioners, can I ask to start with Planning Department first and then end with Public Works?
Okay.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Could you, like, wear a hat? That would help, you know, if you had a Planning Department hat and then a, oh, not today, but next time we do this, that would be helpful.
Chair Payne, certainly. I was wondering if maybe Kelly could come over and get the computer back up because I do have a presentation for Public Works. Oh, you don't know how? Yeah, Brenda will help. Thank you, although Department Director.
We are a team here. We are a team.
But I can certainly start with Planning Department. So, good morning, Chair Payne Commissioners. For the record, my name is Jenny Chambers, Lewis and Clark County Public Works and Planning Department Director. I'm going to start with updates for the Community Development and Planning Department. I transitioned into my new role at the end of July. The team in Planning Department has been very welcoming and have been very responsive to my many questions, so I do want to thank them for that. They have many daily ongoing tasks as well as long-term projects. So I'm just going to provide some of those updates today for you. They're actively working through some processes for several road abandonment petitions. So community members can petition to abandon or change the direction of a roadway. So then Crystal is working on those on a daily basis in, as well as surveys, reviews. There are several conditional use permits under the Part II zoning regs that will be presented to the Board of Adjustments in the coming months. There'll be three in September and four in October. Today, you guys heard from Lindsay on and approved the contract extension for the joint infrastructure study. She indicated the consultant is working on the final existing conditions report. And there will be another open house for the public on September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, from eleven thirty to one in room three twenty-six. So as that project continues, she looks at public engagement opportunities to, to get input from the public. The subdivision regulations, as she indicated, are also getting close. Staff are finalizing comments from the consultant. And once the final draft is ready, it will be sent to stakeholders for review and comments. That would be the Helena Business, Building Industry Association, the Helena Realtors Association, and some, many of the developers in the area to get their input. Once we get their comments, it will be followed by an open house and public review process of those subdivision regulations. So that will be coming in the next several months. The fee schedule update that I know you are aware of is, is moving forward. It will be scheduled for consideration by the Board of County Commissioners in September of twenty twenty-five. So you'll hear that. If adopted and approved, we're going to have a delayed effective date for those new fee rules. If approved, to start October one, so we have a clear period of time when, when the new fee rules would be charged. But you'll hear more about that in September. Floodplain Administration continues with reviewing new permits as well as, Warby actively follows up on violations to get those entities to return to compliance based upon floodplain violations. He provided a presentation to Helena Realtors Association recently and also participated in the Lake Helena Watershed Festival. So as part of the floodplain administration permitting duties, he also provides a lot of public outreach and engagement opportunities as well to try to get information out there to folks. The Historical Preservation Office supports the City of Helena and Lewis and Clark County Heritage Tourism Council with monthly meetings. And the next meeting is September sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, at five thirty. At this meeting, they will be considering either one or possibly two City of Helena demolition permits. So they take those permits under advisement based upon recommendations from the Historical Preservation Office. To conclude, the Community Development and Planning Department update, I want to end by highlighting a major milestone and recently, recent accomplishment with that group. As you guys are aware, but I just want to echo it, on July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, you approved the Resolution twenty twenty-five dash sixty-two to adopt and update the Lewis and Clark County growth policy. This was a huge effort and completing this project would not have been possible without their and the team's exceptional skills and commitment for that effort. There were many opportunities for public engagement above and beyond, I think, what they absolutely needed to do to get input from the community. And also, many of the members of the public took time to provide comments for that growth plan. Big thanks to Lindsay for leading this effort and also to the entire Public Works team. So we also did a celebration at one of the staff meetings based upon that growth policy. So thank you. Any questions on Planning Department?
Andy? Anything?
No.
Okay.
I did, I just, to echo that, though, big, big lift. And please thank them again for us, for me. Thanks.
Okay, moving on to Public Works. There's a lot to highlight, but I thought this time I would show some photos. I'm hoping this doesn't set a precedent for future Public Works updates, but I would walk through some of these slides as part of my presentation. So we're wrapping up many of the projects at the end of the construction season. So the picture you see here is the asphalt overlay on Lake Helena on the causeway. So with this road project, there was some many, many soft spots associated with the road that the road crew actually went out and dug those areas up and got them prepared so that when Montana Materials Incorporated came in, which was our contractor to do the asphalt overlay, the soft spots were already addressed. So a partnership effort between the road department staff and the contractors to help us get this work done. So the, the Lake Helena Causeway and also Jim Town Road received an asphalt overlay. In addition, we then chip sealed, fog sealed, and then we'll be priming epoxy paint on these road surfaces as well. In addition, we chip sealed Heron Road, Billings Street, Marcella Burke Drive, and Flowery. So the final fog seal and epoxy paint, because some of those roads don't have paint on them currently, that's scheduled for the week of September second. So the project will be wrapped up. In addition to the road maintenance, there was also road rural improvement projects. You heard a little bit this morning on the Canal Circle project, which was part of the road prioritization plan. As Jessica indicated, the county road department budgeted for that work, but the homeowners will maintain that through a maintenance rural improvement district. So it will drop off of the county road department maintenance moving forward. So that's the partnership that's done on these projects between the road department and also the rural improvement district program. So just moving on a little bit to some gravel roads. We continue with gravel road maintenance across the county. One project, which is what's pictured here, was adding twenty thousand tons of new gravel to the lower six miles of Sun Canyon Road. Sun Canyon Road is an eighteen-mile gravel road project in total. And so in order to accomplish that, it's broken out into six-mile segments. So we do lower, then a couple more years, we'll do middle, a couple more years, we'll do the upper portion. So in order to manage that, at the last month's Augusta Government Day, we got comments from some of the public indicating that because this road work was done, like you talk about, Commissioner Payne, the traffic, the flow of the traffic for a speed has greatly increased. So yes, we make improvements to the roads and people drive faster. As well as we added a new pit run on sections of Dearborn Road up in Augusta, also new pit run on the seven-mile road outside of Craig. So in addition to the gravel roads around the Helena area, we also spent a lot of time working in the, the remote areas of the county as well. On the bridge projects, I wanted to highlight the Bird Tail Road Bridge Detour. This bridge is installed and the detour is open for heavy and oversized loads. This is a special thanks to the Dearborn Ranch and also the bridge crew. Dearborn Ranch has allowed us, through an agreement, to use this temporary access in order to have heavy loads and, and heavy weight loads go across that location. The main roadway with the, with the old bridge that has weight restriction on it is for every daily traffic of just regular vehicles, but then the detour could be used when there's hay trucks or propane tank trucks or fire trucks that needs to go through, so.
And the reason this was an emergency, Department of Transportation said they were going to close the road because they happened to be up there when somebody was driving their loaded hay truck across this bridge that had had significant weight restrictions. Apparently, the hay driver didn't realize that. Anyway, this was a big deal. There's only one road in and one road out, and the people who lived out there would have had a very difficult time, except that our, our Public Works Department got the Dearborn Ranch to work with us. They located this temporary bridge out in Idaho, got it brought in here at a very reasonable cost. Anyway, so that, I, I'm just so pleased that this came out and this is all done, like, it's, has not been a year. When, when was that road closed?
Ms. Chair Payne, it was, it was closed with the, the limiting the heavy load traffic at the end of October.
Okay, okay. But the, the road didn't get closed because our road department came up with this plan. They put what they called a serpentine in place, meaning they've got these barriers about every fifteen feet. You can drive, you know, if you drive a little Subaru car buzz through there. If you drive a hay truck, you can't.
Yes.
So it served the purpose of general traffic, but addressed the concerns of Department of Transportation. And I'm just so proud that you guys got this all figured out. So, and the serpentine thing, I thought that would, because they had to do something right away.
Right.
So.
Yes, yes, correct, Commissioner Payne. I just wanted to indicate Clay Cottle is our bridge manager. And when I asked him to send me the photos, and I have a few more photos I'll go through on Bird Tail Bridge as well, I wanted to tell you what he said in his text that he sent to me when he attached the photos. He said that his team did an exceptional well job. They always focused on safety and he was very proud of them. So I thought that was a nice statement. I just wanted to second that, that comment.
Good job, Bodie.
So I'll just flip through a few of these really quickly. So that was the, the last picture was the, the bridge getting delivered. This is the crane giving them installed. That's the actual bridge on the bridge deck being built on the location. And you can see a couple of the bridge crew staff in the background. And that's what you'll see today when you go across that bridge. So not only was the bridge put in place, we also have to construct a road bed and roadway in order to get from one end of the road to the other.
As I recall, we agreed to put in gates so that the landowner's cattle wouldn't wander off and that the gates have to be opened and shut every time. Where were the gates put in?
Chair Payne, Commissioner Payne, yes, the gates were put in. They would be on the main Bird Tail Road prior to starting the detour and then on the other side of the, the other bridge to, to end on the other side of Bird Tail, or Bird Tail Road.
Thank you.
One other thing to just mention on this, the next steps, because we're not, certainly not done with this project, the, while working on the final design and the permanent bridge replacement, and we'll have to find funding. We're, we're now working on a Montana Coal Endowment Program Planning Grant for Bird Tail that if we get the planning grant funding, that would allow us to do the, the documents and the grant application needed in order to apply for the Montana Coal Endowment Program construction dollars for the next legislative session. So we're actively looking at the next steps on this project. The next bridge I wanted to show you, if you haven't been out there to take a look at it quite yet, the Head Lane Bridge, it started work June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. They had seventy-five days of construction. They're making great progress on that, that bridge as well. Road crews will grade and mag the road before it's reopened, so we'll keep it closed until we get the road redone from the road department. And the goal is it should be open by mid-September, so.
This year?
Correct, correct. So in about a couple weeks from now.
Yeah.
Just a couple pictures there from different locations. And then just to end a little bit on some of the shop work from, you heard from Dustin this morning as well, they're just starting to prepare for winter, you know, getting all of our road equipment, snow plows, graders up for when the snow starts flying here shortly. As well as the rural improvement district, Jessica is working on the procurement efforts for getting our snowplow qualified folks on contract for contracted services for RID snow removal in the next couple of months. Interesting thing about winter is we try to prepare for it now, knowing it's going to be, you know, October to February. This was the picture from spring of last year, April twenty twenty-five, where York got hammered with all that snow. And this was the first time that one of the graders had to be actually chained up to do some of that snow removal. So it's kind of a neat picture. Moving on to the noxious weed department, I wanted to share this photo of the department of, we coordinate with the Department of Agricultural Pesticide Recycling Truck. They come and stage at the Public Works Complex three or four times per year to allow folks to bring in pesticide containers, herbicide containers for recycling of those, that material. So at this particular event on August twenty-fifth, we, they collected a hundred and seventy-eight containers for recycling. So at this particular event on August 25th, we, they collected 178 containers for recycling down at the Public Works. Christian and crew are actively working on weed management plans. There's 57 active weed management plans, 38 of them have been inspected. That covers more than 460 acres of, of project for Noxious Weed Management. We have 122 compliance cases received so far and 96 of them enclosed. We always have a really good compliance rate with the program as far as getting education outreach out to those folks and getting them to return to compliance if they have a Noxious Weed Management issue. The county also continues with the wide, right-of-way spraying and special partnership projects continued to control the Noxious Weed for the areas that we are responsible for within the county. Building Division, I just wanted to put in the highlights of the, the tracking that we do on dashboarding, just to work out, look at those work orders that they're trying to manage across the county buildings. In August, there was 162 work orders. The majority of those always come from the detention center, the Murray Building and the courthouse, which are definitely understandable based upon the number of employees that we have in those buildings and also the challenges that, that they have with some of the detention inmates associated with requiring additional maintenance on some of the issues that come up there. One, one of the projects I'd like to show you, kind of a before and after, a recently completed repair of the concrete and also new painting of the Lincoln Road Shop. So you can see the before photo there where the CMU, the concrete cylinder blocks were starting to fail and pick away that was going to impact structural challenges with the building have got repaired, as well as new fresh coat of paint that also just helps with maintenance long-term. Progress on the many other projects of the buildings continue. We are moving forward with almost completing the ARPA-funded projects for the makeup air unit replacement and new generator at the Murray, Michael A. Murray Building. And we also were recently awarded, you guys recently awarded the bid for the roof and gutter project at the courthouse. So we gave the courthouse folks a heads-up this week at a meeting with the judges and the clerks on that particular project where there's going to be some impacts on noise and, and staging of the material and things like that. So that's underway. And then the last thing I just want to highlight is just grants in general. So in the last few years, Public Works has been very successful in grant awards. The total amount of Lewis Clark County received for Public Works projects totaled more than $5 million. If you add in the Dalton Mountain Bridge project, that would be closer to $10 million. Currently, we're getting assistance from the Grants Department on closing out two grants. Public Works is actively working on startup grants or actively working on projects for 11 additional grants, and we have recently applied for two additional grants. So it's a lot of effort to come in, not only from the project financial side of things, but also through the planning of that and then the closeout of those projects. This week, we got some good news. We received notice from the Montana Department of Transportation of the approval of Senate Bill 536 funds to get our match dollars for the Augusta Clemens Bridge. That amount for that match is $793,700. That bridge will now be supported with the Montana Coal Endowment Program, funding that received at the last legislative session, and will be 100% funded by grants on that bridge replacement. Also, next week, we will be meeting with the Defense Access Route folks at Fort Harrison. They're going to be up in Great Falls for a meeting, but they're going to come down to Helena to meet with us to discuss more about the 1 million, 1.1 million dollar funding that we're going to get from the Military National Guard Department of Congress appropriated funds for the design efforts of Country Club Road. So that will be next week as well. I also sent the agreement to Nico for review, so it's in legal court as well with that agreement. The good news about that agreement is they're writing it open-ended, meaning that we'll get the 1 point million for design, and then they've indicated in that agreement that upon additional approval of Congress appropriated funding, that it will also, we would also oversee the construction of those projects as far as whatever we get from the design to reconstruct that road moving forward. So that's going to include from the Jocelyn Street all the way to Williams, which will also include addressing that T intersection on William Street. So good news is we've got the design money now. It'll be in the hopper for trying to get additional funding in the future for, for construction, and we'll have an agreement in place for that whole time of that time period of that agreement. So that's what I had today. Thanks, Chair and Commissioner.
It's not exciting. I, I know that having you do these reports in person takes up time and it's kind of a pain. However, I really like the idea of seeing you face-to-face and then, and you all interact with each other, recognizing that this is such a good team. We've all got these common goals, we're all trying to, and I'm, I'm just so proud of the way this team works. So thanks for all, for the efforts on the reports and the hard work you do and taking your job seriously. And I really do like the personal, personal reports, much better than a printed report. It is really hard for me to stay focused on a printed report, but when I've got a warm body up there, then we can ask questions and communicate. Anything else? Okay, we, we're going to move right along into the, oh, board appointments is the next item on our agenda, presented by Mr. Roger Balls. Thank you all for your reports. They were really interesting.
Thank you, Chair Payne and Commissioners. Item 3K on the agenda today is board appointments, and you have two of them. We usually take them one at a time for your action. The first one, yeah, and these candidates meet the qualifications for the considerations that you're giving them today. The first one is the Airport Authority Board. Jim Enyard served a term on the board and is not interested in serving another term. Bob Celisgar, Trevor Kirkland, and Peter Strauss applied. Action staff recommends that the Commissioners consider the applicants and choose one to a term that will expire September 1, 2028. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Roger. Is there any questions from the Commission?
Chair Payne, not a question, but maybe a, a comment and a pitch here to the Commission. And I just wanted to say that I, I know all three of these gentlemen, and they're all excellent candidates. I'd like to appoint all three of them, but we only have one spot. And whatever one we choose, I, I hope that the others will stay engaged because I'd like to appoint them to, to this board at some time, so. But I would suggest, and this is because I think he was the first to apply, he also is very qualified, and I know him to be a good candidate, served with him on another board or have served with him on another board. I would suggest that we, this round, appoint Trevor Kirkland and hopefully appoint the others at a future date. So I'll just leave it at that, and whatever the Commission decides, I'll vote the way I vote.
Thank you, Andy.
Yes.
Tom, do you have some comments for us?
Well, I agree with Commissioner Hahnhausen that they're all three qualified people, and wish we had more spots on the, on there. And was that a motion?
I, I will make a motion, if that's okay at this point. I would move to appoint Trevor Kirkland.
I think they're out of control.
Oh, public comment, yeah, sorry about that. Not yet.
You are untimely. Okay.
Thank you. Sorry. Second.
No, we can't do a motion without public comment.
Okay, thank you. Sorry.
Do you want to talk about either of the other candidates?
No, I just think they're very good people, and I just think they're all three qualified. That's, that was the point I was trying to make.
Okay. I did get an opportunity, Bob Celisgar came in and visited with me in my office one day, and I think that you were not, you guys might not have been in the office that day, but anyway, it was good to visit with him. Yes, these people are all well-known in our community, and I appreciate them offering to become members of this important board. Any more comments from the Commission? Is there any public comment? Boy, we thinned them out, didn't we? Seeing no public comment, I would entertain a motion. Andy?
Chair Payne, I would move that we appoint Trevor Kirkland to the Airport Authority Board for this particular position.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Commission appoint Trevor Kirkland for this particular position to expire September 1, 2028. Is there any further comment from the board? Seeing none, all in favor of appointing Trevor Kirkland to the Airport Authority Board, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Trevor Kirkland has successfully been appointed anonymous, or not anonymously, unanimously, there's a word, as the member of the Airport Authority Board, and we appreciate the people who have stepped up and wanted to participate in this, so thank you all. Okay, then, the Consolidated City-City Planning Board. Oop, I guess you get to tell us all about this, Roger.
Chair Payne and Commissioners, thank you. Yeah, I'll, I'll read this into the record as we usually do. Commissioner, this, this next appointment regarding, is regarding the Consolidated City and County Planning Board. Lois Steinbeck is serving her first full term on the board and wishes reappointment. There were no other applicants. Action staff recommends that the Commissioners consider the applicant to a term that will expire September 1, 2028. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Is there any comments from the board, from the Commissioners? I could comment that I think Lois is an excellent candidate. I've worked with her for years on various things here in the county. Anything? Nope?
Nope.
Okay, any public comment? Seeing no public comment, I need a motion.
Chair Payne, I would move to appoint Lois Steinbeck to the Consolidated City-City Planning Board for a term that would expire September 1, 2028. Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve the appointment of Lois Steinbeck to this August board. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. And Lois Steinbeck is unanimously appointed to the Consolidated City and County Planning We have come to the part of our agenda for public comment on any public matter within the jurisdiction of the Commission that is not on the agenda above. Seeing none, we are adjourned.